How many times I'm on assignment, like, uh, Mr. Johnson, I'm out of one quarter of the eye watching him, like, how was both of them? How was it for the meeting?
Right, right.
What is he doing? Then I don't.
I want to use you as my reference.
Right.
Yeah, so pretty.
Yeah, I did it once.
Do you expect? Wait, we're throwing?
No.
Yeah, it was most likely.
It was don't give him.
Yeah.
In which case.
Right, yeah, yeah, yeah.
As soon as you see him, you should.
My, my, you're, hold on, I'm probably gonna be right here under the airlock.
Maybe have somebody else.
You guys, you guys always, you guys always work in under people's chairs, not even there, is it?
Oh, so they would have to. Probably.
I, I. For my name.
And you don't want to.
Right. I'm watching from the front of all you guys, like, oh, yeah. What, what, you need to know, like, what to, how to prepare for something, talk to the TV guy. Y'all know that's our minute. Y'all know how to plan for the weather, right? But I'm on my, like, business.
Three or four.
They're now.
They should have the. Those who. Or. Where's the, this one, the cuts we've been asking for.
Yeah, right. Three hundred dollars for a ride, right?
But they won't, they won't cut anything else. So this, we were talking about, like, a hundred. Oh, great.
But I, I only. Like hiking, hiking, and holy water.
How long does it take a driver, except, you know, the budget's that one.
Why is it?
I get it back on. So there's things like that.
I haven't, how many, um, how many pairs have you been in? Like, do you?
He doesn't.
Do you give in, like, after the last year? Do you give in to the game? I, I. I work with my. I've called it one pair of times. Like, now, because it's like my uniform, right, like. I can't believe he's. He's a ribbon, you know, so, um, yeah. What, I'm.
It's like a.
Look, well, I'm like a pair, and I'm at, I'm at, I had five. And then they, they, and after. What, what, they heard the word, they're like, my god. Well, you know, it's surprising to me, because I have to hit the. I don't know if it's actually shocking, but it's surprising to me also, yeah.
Why?
That's. Yeah.
Some people want it on, of course, and a lot of us were.
Not, like, you don't want to be in the. But I love.
All that white suit.
Exactly, like, they're social, they're social, in, like, all, like, they're not, they're neither fancy people. Or not. They're so common. Parliament.
Yeah. Uh, it's from, even, uh.
Recording in progress.
Yeah. We even had a.
I think we probably. Twenty twenty six, no, we're together.
Yeah. We usually. Just. And these people came with the. And that's kind of.
So they're like, we had a, um, a couple.
How to waste. Yeah. So we always said, once today, uh, we also had. A point. It's tricky.
Yeah. But you, but you were such.
So like, you were part of this whole series of, um.
Yeah, I'm one of the.
Buddy guys, and then they just. Just because they, uh. You put them just. Somebody would miss you, you know, sweep over and. That's, that's, uh, for a while. I don't. People, the whole show, it seems to be the. Well, off the center, the center block. It looks really nice when you know how to control it.
Are you surprised?
I mean, there's dust on the seat.
Also, with the best part, this past summer, I don't know why. I know, it's. You know, what, you know what, I didn't know, I put him on for the first, like, big show. Yeah, I was lobbing around.
Yeah, it was.
Like, you know, we reached a.
Uh, not necessarily.
Point of return.
You gotta push it down, and then. Four hundred. Oh, but you know, these are adjustable, they're always, you could flip. Go in, like, so some guys. Yeah, so some guys, when they go up, they like to give. Took up, or they like to go down. And some guys, like, every time I use one of these. What you're saying, you're using taxis. But I don't do it, but that's. It's. Those sort of.
The city of Chicago City Council Rules of Conduct for Public Meetings, two thousand twenty-three to two thousand twenty-seven pursuant to the Chicago City Council Rules of Order and Procedure, Rule forty-nine, the Sergeant at Arms sets forth the following rules of conduct to be followed during the public comment period and the duration of all committee and city council meetings, profane, vulgar, threatening, abusive, or disruptive language is not permitted, demeaning, discriminatory, or harassing behavior and speech directed towards others is not permitted, disruptive behavior, including disruptive or disrespectful conduct during others' presentations, is not permitted, banners, flyers, or signage are not permitted, backpacks, large bags, and sharp objects are not permitted, clear bags, not tinted in color, that do not exceed twelve by twelve by six inches, will be permitted and are subject to search, health food and beverages, including in metal canisters, are not permitted, cell phones must be placed on silent prior to entering the meeting room, individuals must remain seated, public comment speakers are permitted to stand only when providing public comment, small handheld devices may be used only while seated, and the user must refrain from interfering with the view or hearing of other individuals, individuals or groups failing to adhere to these rules will be asked to cease such disruptive conduct and failure to comply will result in their being subject to removal from the meeting by the Sergeant at Arms.
I don't know when you buy them, be outside for six hours. Yeah. Like, yes, we have.
I want, like, there's a company called Tesla, right now, there's. And when they first started, this is.
You can, you can always take those. Yeah.
There was sixteen.
But, um. I have a. So I had. My. Oh, yeah. Yeah. The extra hood, you know, and, and.
These are twelve or sixteen.
The. For harder. Like, you.
This is, this is.
Yeah.
Yes. I had.
And after. I do it like that.
Which is cheap.
Yeah.
And then, like, one station. Can you help?
Like.
This one. This one, I believe, had more plates, these, uh, these plates for. The longer it is, the. It was just one. Yeah. And then this guy, he would do that.
City of Chicago City Council Rules of Conduct for Public Meetings, two thousand twenty-three to two thousand twenty-seven pursuant to the Chicago City Council Rules of Order and Procedure, Rule forty-nine, the Sergeant at Arms sets forth the following rules of conduct to be followed during the public comment period and the duration of all committee and city council meetings, profane, vulgar, threatening, abusive, or disruptive language is not permitted, demeaning, discriminatory, or harassing behavior and speech directed towards others is not permitted, disruptive behavior, including disruptive or disrespectful conduct during others' presentations, is not permitted, banners, flyers, or signage are not permitted, backpacks, large bags, and sharp objects are not permitted, clear bags, not tinted in color, that do not exceed twelve by twelve by six inches, will be permitted and are subject to search, health food and beverages, including in metal canisters, are not permitted, cell phones must be placed on silent prior to entering the meeting room, individuals must remain seated, public comment speakers are permitted to stand only when providing public comment, small handheld devices may be used only while seated, and the user must refrain from interfering with the view or hearing of other individuals, individuals or groups failing to adhere to these rules will be asked to cease such disruptive conduct and failure to comply will result in their being subject to removal from the meeting by the Sergeant at Arms.
Great, it's a thing.
When you ask you, I can take those, they get me. But it's you.
You know, I'm. I can figure it out, actually.
Yeah.
It's fun, it happens. I feel like it's also our job. That's.
It was a video, I had to do it.
Yeah, it's also our job, we got to.
Yeah.
Right, but then.
Own video, this is.
Also our job, right, like, I can, I can. On my. But.
Well, I don't know why.
Word number, word number? It's, oh, because, well, I really, we want them to split, right? I'm playing, it's fine, I, I understand, I, that's. No, especially, I don't see. Particularly when it's. You know, how. So, just like, I see, I see, right, so, like. He's like, you know, who, who definitely chose the name, right, but like, yeah, I can try.
I was there one day. But I ended up something to, uh. Yeah. And so the question to, uh. Yes, he did, working like a. Brad. Brad, she gets. Yeah, Brad, he's, um, he has all. One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, ten. You know, I had my son in the summer, and I'm thinking of going for a project. Cause mine, uh, out of that, uh, we should have a little program. Just the best house. It's kind of like, it's. Crucial business, yeah, that. Haven't seen him. Oh, thank you. I saw Rick. There's one day that Trump was gonna be at one of the hotels. I saw Rick up there, and asked him. About working. He's been caught, and I told my wife, he's not. He's not working. I asked him, you know, if I'm gonna be trying to work with you. First of all, it's hard to get a job, to get a job for somebody else. He said, yeah, we, we just hired somebody. He said, who's the four? And I said, it's blue. You know what, I'm gonna tell you, it's really hard. When I told my wife. She said, no, because I'm protecting one of them, so I better be, yeah. And I'll work him, because I left.
City of Chicago City Council Rules of Conduct for Public Meetings, two thousand twenty-three to two thousand twenty-seven pursuant to the Chicago City Council Rules of Order and Procedure, Rule forty-nine, the Sergeant at Arms sets forth the following rules of conduct to be followed during the public comment period and the duration of all committee and city council meetings, profane, vulgar, threatening, abusive, or disruptive language is not permitted, demeaning, discriminatory, or harassing behavior and speech directed towards others is not permitted, disruptive behavior, including disruptive or disrespectful conduct during others' presentations, is not permitted, banners, flyers, or signage are not permitted, backpacks, large bags, and sharp objects are not permitted, clear bags, not tinted in color, that do not exceed twelve by twelve by six inches, will be permitted and are subject to search, health food and beverages, including in metal canisters, are not permitted, cell phones must be placed on silent prior to entering the meeting room, individuals must remain seated, public comment speakers are permitted to stand only when providing public comment, small handheld devices may be used only while seated, and the user must refrain from interfering with the view or hearing of other individuals, individuals or groups failing to adhere to these rules will be asked to cease such disruptive conduct and failure to comply will result in their being subject to removal from the meeting by the Sergeant at Arms.
All I'm doing is running my damn ass.
What? You're using the shoot.
The white man, the white man, the white man run.
There's another shot.
Shut up, he doesn't run.
That's a second part.
He don't run. The white man, the white man run. You don't dare him not. Your whole city, these white people, these white people, they're trying to get their own money. They run. The white man, the white man run. The gold roof, he who has the goddamn gold, that's what you ruin. The white man, the white man run.
Two thousand twenty-three to two thousand twenty-seven pursuant to the Chicago City Council Rules of Order and Procedure, Rule Forty-nine, the Sergeant at Arms sets forth the following rules of conduct to be followed during the public comment period and the duration of all committee and city council meetings. Profane, vulgar, threatening, abusive, or disruptive language is not permitted. Demeaning, discriminatory, or harassing behavior and speech directed towards others is not permitted. Disruptive behavior, including disruptive or disrespectful conduct during others' presentations, is not permitted. Banners, flyers, or signage are not permitted. Backpacks, large bags, and sharp objects are not permitted. Clear bags, not tinted in color, that do not exceed twelve by twelve by six inches, will be permitted and are subject to search. Health food and beverages, including in metal canisters, are not permitted. Cell phones must be placed on silent prior to entering the meeting room. Individuals must remain seated. Public comment speakers are permitted to stand only when providing public comment. Small handheld devices may be used only while seated, and the user must refrain from interfering with or hearing of other individuals. Individuals or groups failing to adhere to these rules will be asked to cease such disruptive conduct, and failure to comply will result in their being subject to removal from the meeting by the Sergeant at Arms.
This is a small town. We did all the...
He said, "White man run."
No, there's the... Yeah, there was a couple times with this.
No, he don't run. That's cool, it's a march. The white man, the white man run. I said, "They gonna get rid of him."
We all, we all...
He's still there, he's still white in the public. He's going to go to the rich, the more in the city, and call for a march, and up here was the green tree, green. I say, "Oh, my nation," they gonna get rid of him, but they didn't get rid of him.
They do have... Like, we have Zoom. It's a little... So, the low light, it gets cut. And like, this is my lens, I have a Fujian, this one you can't... And my Fujian opens up in a whole different manner. So, I'm working with low light, low light. So, it's like, we're impacting, we're affecting a couple parts. And I just use a light, you know, bounce off. I'm putting a 6.5, I'm looking at the height of the tree. Yeah. Yeah. Yeah, we have, yeah, we have that as well. We have two. Wow, oh, yeah. Oh, yeah. It's like your own height. Yeah. Yeah. It's so clear. Um, we have, we have Zoom, we actually have my, we go out with, sure, case. Yeah. We got fifty, thirty-five, eighty-five, uh, twenty-four, we got a twenty-four seventy. Uh, the twenty-four seventy is two point eight, all the others are four point two. Yeah. Yeah, it is. Yeah, yeah. 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 I have one, who has a magnetic pocket, and he likes, he said they had handles low light back. Uh, but he says nothing to be concerned with. He has, we also have FX six, FX six, and FX nine. He said when it comes down to low lights, if you use it, it's high, you have good lights. Then all black magic, I've seen black magic before, and you have to be... Okay. Everything's, everything's... That's all it is. Right. Right, yeah, me too. And I remember using one that had a TV screen on both sides. I forgot what you were like, it was a studio.
City of Chicago City Council Rules of Conduct for Public Meetings, Two thousand twenty-three to two thousand twenty-seven pursuant to the Chicago City Council Rules of Order and Procedure, Rule Forty-nine, the Sergeant at Arms sets forth the following rules of conduct to be followed during the public comment period and the duration of all committee and city council meetings. Profane, vulgar, threatening...
Good morning, members of the city council. Please remember to log into your devices. The meeting will begin shortly. Thank you very much.
...and speech directed towards others is not permitted. Disruptive behavior, including disruptive or disrespectful conduct during others' presentations, is not permitted. Banners, flyers, or signage are not permitted. Backpacks, large bags, and sharp objects are not permitted. Clear bags, not tinted in color, that do not exceed twelve by twelve by six inches, will be permitted and are subject to search. Health food and beverages, including in metal canisters, are not permitted. Cell phones must be placed on silent prior to entering the meeting room. Individuals must remain seated. Public comment speakers are permitted to stand only when providing public comment. Small handheld devices may be used only while seated, and the user must refrain from interfering with or hearing of other individuals. Individuals or groups failing to adhere to these rules will be asked to cease such disruptive conduct, and failure to comply will result in their being subject to removal from the meeting by the Sergeant at Arms. City of Chicago City Council Rules of Conduct for Public Meetings, Two thousand twenty-three to two thousand twenty-seven pursuant to the Chicago City Council Rules of Order and Procedure, Rule Forty-nine, the Sergeant at Arms sets forth the following rules of conduct to be followed during the public comment period and the duration of all committee and city council meetings. Profane, vulgar, threatening, abusive, or disruptive language is not permitted. Demeaning, discriminatory, or harassing behavior and speech directed towards others is not permitted. Disruptive behavior, including disruptive or disrespectful conduct during others' presentations, is not permitted. Banners, flyers, or signage are not permitted. Backpacks, large bags, and sharp objects are not permitted. Clear bags, not tinted in color, that do not exceed twelve by twelve by six inches, will be permitted and are subject to search. Health food and beverages, including in metal can...
Good morning, members of the city council. Please remember to log into your devices. The meeting will begin shortly. Thank you.
...only when providing public comment. Small handheld devices may be used only while seated, and the user must refrain from interfering with or hearing of other individuals. Individuals or groups failing to adhere to these rules will be asked to cease such disruptive conduct, and failure to comply will result in their being subject to removal from the meeting by the Sergeant at Arms.
So, you're not blind, you're...
I'm sure. Hi, how are you? Sweet girl, you okay? I think, uh, I'm the only person who goes to the gym instead of getting energy, gets tired. That, I went to the gym this morning, um, and I think I'm the only person who goes to the gym instead of getting energy, I get tired. I'm like, I wanna...
Can everybody please take your seats? Good morning, members of the city council. The meeting will begin shortly. Please remember to log into your devices. Thank you.
City of Chicago City Council Rules of Conduct for Public Meetings, Two thousand twenty-three to two thousand twenty-seven pursuant to the Chicago City Council Rules of Order and Procedure, Rule Forty-nine, the Sergeant at Arms sets forth the following rules of conduct to be followed during the public comment period and the duration of all committee and city council meetings. Profane, vulgar, threatening, abusive, or disruptive language is not permitted. Demeaning, discriminatory, or harassing behavior and speech directed towards others is not permitted. Disruptive behavior, including disruptive or disrespectful conduct during others' presentations, is not permitted. Banners, flyers, or signage are not permitted. Backpacks, large bags, and sharp objects are not permitted. Clear bags, not tinted in color, that do not exceed twelve by twelve by six inches, will be permitted and are subject to search. Health food and beverages, including in metal canisters, are not permitted. Cell phones must be placed on silent prior to entering the meeting room. Individuals must remain seated. Public comment speakers are permitted to stand only when providing public comment. Small handheld devices may be used only while seated, and the user must refrain from interfering with or hearing of other individuals. Individuals or groups failing to adhere to these rules will be asked to cease such disruptive conduct, and failure to comply will result in their being subject to removal from the meeting by the Sergeant at Arms.
No, it looks good. I saw some stuff the first time. I had to piece my shoulder. I'm scared. I got shot some stuff. It looks like, uh, this one newer. So, this, you know, we're supposed to be using this one, but it's bad. But then, you know, it's, you got, you know, this, anyone's...
Happy birthday to you. Happy birthday, Michelle. Happy birthday to you.
Good morning, members of the city council. The meeting will begin shortly. Please remember to log into your devices. Thank you.
So, good morning, everyone. Before we get started, I do want to give a special acknowledgement today. It is Chairwoman Michelle Harris's birthday today. To you. And, um, is there a motion to sing? Okay, all right. All right, Madam Clerk, please take a quorum roll call, please.
The quorum is now open, the quorum is now open. Please use your e-device, the quorum is now open. If you need support, please raise your hand. I will now call on, um, folks who have not used the e-device. Alderman Robinson.
Here.
Robinson is present. Alderman Hall. Hall is present. Alderman Lopez. Lopez is present. Alderman Coleman. Coleman is not present. Alderwoman Taylor. Not present. Alderman Wagispack.
Present.
Wagispack is present. Alderwoman Rodriguez Sanchez. Not present. Alderman Ramirez Rosa.
Present.
Uh, is present. Alderman Riley. Riley is present. Alderman Knutson.
Present.
Knutson is present. Oh, I can't mark you because we have not accepted the virtual yet. Okay. Okay, the quorum is now closed.
Very well, thank you, Madam Clerk. There are forty-six present for absent. Uh, we do have a quorum. There are two members of this body that have asked to participate in today's meeting remotely, which is, uh, for reasons stated in Rule Fifty-nine. Can I get a motion to approve, uh, the, the members who wish to participate remotely upon them being confirmed to be here? Those two members are Knutson and Rodriguez Sanchez. Madam Clerk, could you verify their presence?
Yes, uh, Rodriguez Sanchez, are you in attendance?
I'm present.
Rodriguez Sanchez is present. Alderman Knutson, are you present?
I'm present, Clerk, thank you.
Very well, all those in favor of those two members participating remotely, for reasons stated in Rule Fifty-nine, please signify by saying aye. Any opposed, say nay. In the opinion of the Chair, uh, the ayes have it. Madam Clerk, please, uh, add those two members, uh, a part of the quorum roll call.
They have been added.
Very well, thank you. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please remain standing for the invocation which will be delivered today by Apostle Marlon Ramirez from, uh, Jesus Chicago Ministries.
Thank you for the privilege. Merry Christmas to everyone. Please stand up and release blessings over this beautiful city. Heavenly Father, in the name of Jesus, you are the cornerstone of Chicago. I cancel any confusion, any stress, division, doubt, gossiping, and negativity. And I establish, we establish unity, peace, grace, love, mercy, sustainable transformation in this beautiful city. Deliverance, wisdom, knowledge, passion, strength, healing, and provision. I call new, I call to, uh, new investors, new business, new strategies, new factories. Overall, you will, you desire, you will, Father, in the name of Jesus, break every change and breakthrough. And Father, I establish Second Corinthians five seventeen. God bless you.
Bless you, thank you very much. The Chair recognizes Chairman Irvin.
Thank you, Mr. President. Uh, I would, I move that we recess until Monday, December sixteenth at one PM and call the question.
Very well. There is a motion on the floor under Rule Twenty-one. Um, this is not debatable. There's a roll call for the recess until one PM. Madam Clerk, please take a quorum roll call. Please take a roll call for the recess. Sergeant at Arms, please restore order. Sergeant at Arms.
It is now open, the quorum is now open. Please use your e-device, the quorum is now open, the quorum is now open.
Sergeant at Arms, please restore order to the chambers, please. Madam Clerk, please, I'm sorry, Madam Clerk, thank you, the roll call. Sergeant at Arms, please restore order.
The, the motion to recess vote is now open, the motion to recess vote is now open. Okay, I will now call those who have not...
Sergeant at Arms, please restore order. Sergeant at Arms, please restore order in the council chambers.
Okay, I will now call on those that have not voted. Alderman Beal. This is a motion to recess. Alderman Beal. Alderman Beal, no. Alderman...
So, this is... Thank you, Sergeant at Arms.
Okay. I will finish the roll call. We'll finish the roll call. Alderman Wagispack.
No.
Alderwagispack is a no. Alderwoman Rodriguez Sanchez.
Yes.
Rodriguez Sanchez is a yes. Alderman Viegas. Viegas is a no. Alderman Riley. Riley is a no. Alderman Knutson.
Yes.
Knutson is a yes. The voting is now closed.
The motion to call the question has passed thirty-two to sixteen. This motion passes. The Chair recognizes Alderman Irvin on the motion for recess. It was. Chair recognizes Chairman Irvin.
The motion to recess, that's my call for...
So, the motion to recess, the motion to call the question for the motion to recess has passed thirty-two to seventeen. This meeting will be recessed until December 16th. Chairman recognizes, the Chair recognizes Chairman Irvin.
All right, so we just did our motion to call the question. Now we'll move forward to motion recess.
It's fine. The motion to, the motion to call the question again has successfully passed thirty-two to seventeen. Now, there's a motion to recess until December 16th at 1:00 p.m. Madam Clerk, please take a quorum roll call. Madam Clerk, please take a quorum roll call. The question has been, the question has been called and accepted. There's a motion on the floor to recess until Monday, December 16th at 1:00 p.m. Madam Clerk, please take a quorum roll call. The question, the motion to call the question was raised by Chairman Irvin. That's the vote that we just took. The motion is now on the floor to recess until 1:00 p.m. on Monday. Madam Clerk, please take a quorum roll call. So, for further clarification, please order here. For further clarification, there was a motion to, for recess for Monday, December 16th at 1:00 p.m., and then it was immediately called for the question to be called. And so, the vote that was taken, thank you, the vote that was taken, there was a question called for the motion to recess to Monday, December 16th at 1:00 p.m.